Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer and a pledge. The pledge will be said by, read by Ms. Karen Boudreaux, and the prayer will be from Ms. Bria Green. Bria is an eighth grade female student at Albert Hammond Middle School. She will lead us in a prayer before the pledge. She has earned Principal's List Perfect Attendance Scholar-Athlete Award for earning a 3.25 or higher as an athlete, and a Zern Award for completing more than 25 lessons. She is a member of the Student Council Beta Club, Mindfulness Club, Girl Talk Club, and the Pirate Dance Team. Thank you very much. You go ahead and start, and we'll have the pledge right after.
Good evening, everyone.
Please stand if you're able.
Dear God, thank you for another day to learn, grow, and do my best. I ask that you bless my classmates, help us understand one another, to be kind, patient, and encouraging when things feel hard. Encourage the school board members when they make these decisions today. Give them the strength, peace, and joy as their guide and help us every day. Let our classroom be a place filled with respect, laughter, and teamwork. When any of us feel tired, stressed, or unsure, remind us that we are capable and not alone. Help us to lift each other up, to listen, and to shine together. Thank you for the gift of learning and the people who helped me grow. In Jesus' name as I pray, amen. United States of America, in thy republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that today, Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, the St. Charles Parish School Board meeting. All board members, including our secretary, Michelle Babinot, is in attendance. The first item is the announcement of a public meeting. The following announcement is being made in preparation for a potential Milage renewal election to be held on May 16th, 2026. The notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Wednesday, December 10th, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. at the St. Charles Parish School Board Central Office Boardroom, located at 13855 River Road in Luling, Louisiana, the Parish School Board of the St. Charles State of Louisiana plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in School District Number One of the Parish of St. Charles, State of Louisiana, to authorize the levy of ad valorem taxes therein. Next item on the agenda is 2.01, Resolution in memory of Ms. Joan Nocan. Ms. Karen Boudreaux, would you please read that?
Absolutely. Whereas Ms. Joan Nocan served in the St. Charles Parish Public School System for 16 years, and whereas Ms. Joan Nocan was a dedicated food service technician at RJ Vial Elementary School before retiring in 2000, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Mrs. Joan Nocan its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow. Be it further resolved that a page in the Book of Board Meeting Minutes designated for the November 19th, 2025 Board Meeting be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the family. Mr. President, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
First by Ms. Boudreaux, second by Mr. Oakland. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. We'll ensure that Ms. Nocan's family gets a copy of that resolution. Next item on the agenda is 3.01, Board and Superintendent's Recognition. Ms. Alexis Cannon will read off the names of individuals and teams.
Students. High school students are members of the Louisiana American Choral Directors Association and the Louisiana Music Educators Association All-State Honor Choir. Dusterhan High School's Savannah Houston. Amelia Luquette. High school students are members of the Louisiana Music Educators Association's All-State Honor Choir. Honville High School's Lucien Michel. School system students are members of the Louisiana American Choral Directors Association's All-State Honor Choir. Albert Hammond Middle School's Deja Campbell. Abigail Cartahena. Quinesha Clark. J.C. Derensberg. Sunny Lee. Thanousia Parasuraman. Dusterhan High School, Lila Keller. Tynell Lewis. Kalodro Robashow. Honville High School, Kaylee Via Fanyé. J.B. Martin Middle School, Colton Io. Rosio Cabrera. Tatum George. Zakoria Lalas. Noelle Michelle. Sanai Price. Nalea White. Maximus Young. High school students are members of the Louisiana Music Educators Association's All-State and District Seven Honor Bands. Dusterhan High School's Cade Trish. Honville High School, Ronald Snyder. Honville High School students were named to the Louisiana All Academic Composite Team. Al Johnson. Bennett Nocan. Avery Ortling. Addison Orgeron. High school students were named to a Louisiana All Academic Divisional Team. Dusterhan High School's Kayden Dabney. Jackson Fields. Ella Harrison. Bruce Walker. Honville High School, Ethan Ariano. Carter Burns. Isabella Duffy Perkins. Evan Fricki. Cambrie Garcia. Cameron Keller. Lucien Michel. Jada Moore. Brianna Muller. Rona K. Scott. Gage Seifert. Employees. Norco Elementary School employee received a grant of $17,700 from the Greater New Orleans Foundation for a sensory outdoor classroom, Yvette Surla. St. Rose Elementary School employee is the Louisiana Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Elementary Schools' Physical Education Teacher of the Year, Jacob Thompson. Teams. Honville High School Boys and Girls Cross-Country Teams are district champions. Will all cross-country team members please come forward for a photo?
At this time, we'll take a brief recess for those who would like to depart, unless you'd like to stay here for the business portion. So we'll return here at 7 o'clock in six minutes. And we're back from recess. Next item on the agenda is 4.01, Consent Agenda Items. The Board will vote on items discussed for consent at the November 17th, 2025 Committee Meetings. Item 4.02, Request for Proposals USDA Southeast Commodities Processing Cooperative Agreement. 4.03, Accounts Payable for the Month of October 2025. 4.04, Received Personnel Items. 4.05, Ratification of Substantial Completion, Honville High Cafeteria Expansion and Renovation Project.
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
I second.
First by Mr. Cody, second by Ms. Weber. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 5.01, Board Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2025 Committee Meetings and the October 22nd, 2025 Board Meeting.
Second.
First by Mr. Sufferin', second by Mr. Oakland. Any discussion? All those in favor, Sign Buffett. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. Item 5.02, Change Order Number Four, Honville High School Cafeteria Expansion and Renovation Project. The total cost for all changes is $3,201.34. Zero days will be added to the contract as a result of this change. Approval of this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 17th, 2025, and is along with goal E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to accept Change Order Number Four for the Honville High School Cafeteria Expansion and Renovation Project at a cost of $3,201.34.
First by Mr. Cody, second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. Next item is 5.03, Revisions to Board Policy 4.6.13, Retirements for its First Reading. Upon review of Board Policy 4.6.13, retirements revisions are required to provide clarity for the provisions on retirees' health insurance. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 17th, and is along with goals C and D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the recommended revisions to Board Policy 4.6.13, retirements for a first reading.
Second.
First by Mr. Sufferin', second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. Item 5.04, Bid Acceptance, Middle School Auxiliary Gyms and Fitness Rooms Project. Bids were received from eight contractors on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. The lowest bid was received from TBT Contracting Incorporated of Louisiana in the amount of $9,869,000.00. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest base bid will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board, of the Board Committee Meeting on Monday, November 17th, 2025, and is along with goal E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to accept the lowest base bid submitted by
Mr. President, I move to accept the lowest base bid submitted by TBT Contracting, Incorporated of Louisiana for the Middle School Auxiliary Gyms and Fitness Rooms Project at an investment of $9,869,000.
First by Mr. Cody, second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. 5.05, 2026-2027 School Session Calendar for a Second Reading and Adoption. School Board policy mandates that the school board shall adopt a calendar for the forthcoming school session. A committee comprised of school board members, a business and industry representative, central office administrators, principals, teachers, parents, and students prepared a calendar for the board approval in accordance with the policy and procedures. Adoption of the calendar for the forthcoming school year as early as possible allows for the information to be disseminated to all stakeholders in a timely fashion. This agenda item was reviewed and accepted for a first reading at the October 22, 2025 Board Meeting and is aligned with goal A and F of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the proposed 2026-2027 School Session Calendar for the second reading and adoption.
Second.
First by Ms. Weber, second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. Item 5.06, Stipend Rate for Non-Certified Tutors. The district employs tutors through the state-funded high-dose tutoring program. These tutors are typically former certified teachers. The stipend rate for these tutors has been previously approved by the school board. In order to recruit and retain suitable tutors who are not former certified teachers, a stipend rate of $25 per hour is recommended for these tutors. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 17, 2025, and is aligned with goals A, C, and D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move to approve the stipend rate for non-certified tutors.
First by Ms. Budrow.
Second.
First by Ms. Budrow, second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. 5.07, Girls' Flag Football. Louisiana High School Athletic Association, LHSAA, is offering an opportunity for girls' high school flag football pilot program for the 2026 and 2027 spring seasons. The sport promotes inclusivity, sportsmanship, leadership development, and participation in non-traditional athletic pathways. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, November 17, 2025, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move to approve participation in the LHSAA Girls' Flag Football Pilot Program and stipend rates for head coach and two assistant coaches at the cost of $12,500 to $14,700 for stipend for the coaches and $6,000 for equipment.
Second.
First by Ms. Budrow, second by Mr. Sufferin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please cast your vote. That item passes unanimously. Item 6.01, Standing Committee Reports. At this time, the floor is open for board members to provide a report for their standing committee if they would like. Hearing none, we'll move on to item 6.02, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. High school students enrolled in LEAP courses and LEAP retesters will take LEAP assessment from December 8 through December 10. On these days, only students participating in LEAP assessment will attend school. All students will participate in remote learning activities for non-LeAP courses. Our high schools will provide further information to students and families. Some athletics updates. Hanville Industrial High Swim Teams are heading to Suffolk for the state swim meet. The Hanville High School Boys and Girls Cross-Country Teams were both crowned district champions. The Hanville Boys Cross-Country Team placed ninth at regionals. The Hanville Girls Cross-Country Team placed sixth at regionals. Both the Hanville Girls teams, both the Hanville Girls and Boys teams advanced in the state cross-country meet in Agnes, and the girls finished 17th overall. Hanville High School Football finished with an 8-2 record. The Tigers are ranked #11 in the playoffs and beat Sladoe High School in the first round of the playoffs and now take on Parkway High School this Friday. Destrehan High School finished the football season with an 8-2 record, crowned district champions, and is ranked third in the playoffs. The Fighting Wildcats received a bye in the first round of the playoffs and will host Ouachita High School this Friday at Destrehan. In volleyball, the Hanville High School Volleyball Team finished the regular season 16-23 and was crowned district champions. The Lady Tiger Volleyball Team advanced to the first round of the playoffs as the #22 seed, but fell to Archbishop Chappelle. As a reminder, school buildings are closed for the Thanksgiving holidays beginning November 24 through the 28. The central office will be open November 24 and 25. On behalf of our school board, our entire school system, and I, we would like to express our heartfelt thanks to the families and community of St. Charles Parish for your support of our AAA school system. As we head into Thanksgiving, we are blessed and thankful to have your continued partnership and trust in educating, supporting, and caring for your children. You and I, we are St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Move to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.